We will start, I'm gonna call the meeting to order, a special meeting for April 3rd, 2020. Madam clerk, roll call please.
The record will reflect that Councilmember Muldoon has an excused absence and Councilmembers Hurdman and Duffield are at the meeting telephonically and everyone else is present.
Okay, let's just confirm with them.
So, I just need you to say you're here, Mr. Duffield, are you here?
Yes.
Mr. Hurdman, are you here?
Present.
Thank you very much. As we start every meeting, we start with an invocation, the Pledge of Allegiance. Tonight, the invocation will be led by Councilmember Brenner and I will lead the Pledge of Allegiance. You stand.
I ask, if I could do an invocation to see me in honor of the members of our council staff, because so many of people that are part of that, why it on meetings and service to others in order to maintain their program. So a big tenet of that program is the stewardess. Tonight, I ask you to join me in a prayer which goes, not ready to steward me to accept the things I cannot change, courage to change the things I can do to better this.
Thank you. Swaps your hand over your heart, ready, again.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, my nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice in its hands.
Well, as everyone is getting settled, let me just tell you, it probably looks different looking at the council meeting right now, and that's because it is different. We're following all the guidelines right now, and so we have actually closed off the council chambers to members of the public. And members of the public are actually sitting right now in the community room across the way, where we have used a system called WebEx to ensure that they have live feed to us, and then they'll be able to make public comments from there. The goal of social distancing, we're taking very seriously, and I want to make sure you understand why it looks like the way it does. My expectation is that the next council meeting, we will actually not be filming at all from the council chambers, but instead we'll be filming from our respective homes or wherever else we might be at that moment. But I can tell you that I fully expect to be home, just like I'm hoping most people will be and are following those orders. So, we, I've called the special meeting for one purpose, and that one purpose is to discuss short-term lodging. There is a proposed ordinance that is a part of the agenda packet. Real briefly, I have the option as the mayor to move things around a bit in the agenda. We do have a public comment on non-agenda items, given that there is only one item, and I want to make sure we're providing full attention to that. I'm going to be moving the non-agenda public comment to the back, which would be right after our current business. And so, we're gonna go right into current business. So, current business is to discuss the purpose of why we called this special meeting. Before, before we do this, we're not going to have a staff report on this item. It is only one item. Everyone has had the opportunity to read the proposed ordinance. We have received extensive email communication, phone calls and whatnot throughout the last 24 hours. For that, I'm thankful. We had great impassioned, logical pleas on both sides of this issue. We had people suggesting compromises. We had a lot of conversation. And, and I just want to say, thank you. I will say just one last thing, which is, I don't, I, this has never changed my opinion, but a lot of people are always curious, where did the public comments come down, pro or con? And I can tell you that we did receive a few in the last result, but I, it's almost exactly 50/50, almost exactly. And our city clerk's office took a look through and tabulated that for us. So, like every good controversial issue inside of our city, that's where it came down to. And yeah, and I'll show you, this is a simple printout of all of the public comments we received on this, and I have read them all. So, I just want to say again, thank you very much to everyone who took time to write in. So, with that, given that we don't have a staff report, I'm going to ask our city attorney just a few questions. The first question's going to be, what would be the legal effect if we were to adopt the ordinance as proposed? The second is, when does it end? And the third is, are there any exceptions in the ordinance that he wanted to call out? So, Mr. City Attorney, Mr. Harp.
So, the basis for being able to adopt this comes from the charter, which allows the city council to adopt an emergency ordinance if the health, safety of the communities at, in peril. If this ordinance is adopted, it would do several things. The first one is, it would provide that no new permit for a short-term lodging unit. And that's the permit that's required if you're going to have rentals on a short-term basis. It would provide that no new short-term lodging permit would be issued by the city for the duration of the emergency. And the second thing it would do, it would make it unlawful for anyone to rent out, advertise for rent, render into an agreement for the rental of any lodging unit for a short term. And so, that's 30 days or, I'm sorry, less than 30 days. Those are the two primary things that the ordinance would do. There would be an exception if there, the rental was to a medical professional or an emergency responder. People could still rent to them on a short-term basis. And then, anyone who currently is occupying a unit would have till April 10th, 2020 to end their tenancy. And then, as far as the effective date, how long this will be effective, it would go to effect immediately, and it would remain in effect until one of three things happens. The state of emergency is terminated by a proclamation of the governor of California, the local emergency that was proclaimed on March 15th, and ratified by the council on March 18th. If that's terminated by proclamation of the city council, this order would no longer be effective. And the third way, it would not be effective if the emergency ordinance is repealed in whole or part by the city council.
All right, thank you. So, with that, I'm gonna defer to my colleagues if they'd like to talk a little bit about their thoughts on this, if they have any questions for Mr. Harp. And I think, given the issue, I'll tell you what, why don't I just start from my right down? So, Ms. Brenner, would you like to, would you like to say anything?
I don't, I don't want to say too much right now about this, but I do have some questions about the board. My concern is new people coming in to our community. I'm not concerned about people who are already there, who are sheltering in place basically because they're there. So, I'm not sure about that, causing people to lean on it. If they're sheltering in place, I think they should be allowed to shelter in place. So, that's a concern I have about it. And my concern is people coming in and starting new occupations during this period of time, except for those that you mentioned that are special circumstances. Those, I'm not quite comfortable with the ordinance the way it is, so we need to talk about that specifically before we get to that.
Okay. Any questions, Mr. Avery?
None.
All right. Ms. Dixon?
Yeah, thank you.
All right. Let's see, since, well, I'll go, Mr. Hurdman, do you have any questions?
No, I don't.
Mr. Duffield, do you have any questions?
No.
Okay. So, at this time, then, what we're going to do is, we're gonna go out to public comment, and I will still observe the same time requirements, three minutes per public speaker. And let's see, I believe...
I'd like to speak in public comment. If you'll come up here and stand behind the line and look at the camera. Counselor, I can hear you. Whoever would like to speak first. About three minutes?
That's me. Although I'm just... This is a good spot. My name is Barry Seawitz. I own a commercial real estate company. I'm a former resident of Peninsula, and I currently own approximately 20 properties on the Newport Peninsula, some of which are short-term rentals. And I own properties in other cities throughout County, which are also operated as short-term rentals. I understand the desire to try and implement this ordinance, but I really caution you on thinking it through in terms of the financial impact on the entire community. I didn't see any specifics in terms of a timeline. I can tell you that in talking in detail with our operators that rent from us, that are short-term rental companies, they are both medium and large-sized companies, they are already operating today at 5% occupancy from what they were previously. And the only people that are coming to stay with them, from what I've been told, are people that are trying to come to get away, and are local people from Southern California. There is no air travel. Air travel is down 85%. So, you don't have people coming from out of the country and other states to stay here. I understand the concern for permanent residents in these areas of being around other people coming and going. The financial impact is that you will basically tank the mom-and-pop operator, you will tank the short-term operator, and you will cause all these people to go into default. All of them are trying to stay afloat so they can get to the summer months to make money, which is when these properties are in high season. With no deadline on your ordinance, people won't be able to take bookings for May, June, July, because no one will know what's going on. Secondly, I'm not sure if you're familiar, but ARBNB has 100% cancellation policy with all of their customers. What this means is, anyone can cancel at any time. They can actually cancel up to the time that they actually move into the place. And in many instances, what people are doing now is they're moving into a place for a week or two, and then they're finding a cheaper place down the street and canceling one or two days into their reservation because other people are more desperate. What you also have is that if you put a moratorium on short-term rentals, it will cause other people to flood the market, trying desperately to rent them to whoever they can. And there's just no market for a 30-day rental, especially going into the summertime. So, the domino effect to the real estate market, domino effect to both landlords, renters, et cetera, is huge, not to mention the fiscal impact to the city in terms of loss of tax revenue. What I would tell you is, as a, as a protection against trying to not have social, or to try have social distancing, trying to accomplish that, it's already been done, because no one's staying there in the first place. Everyone is operating at 5% to 10% occupancy. All you're doing is killing what's left of a very struggling industry in the first place. So, I would just really caution you on doing that. If you want to limit the number of people in a unit to six or less, that would make sense to me. If you want to limit it to a 15-day period, that would make sense to me. But to do it indefinitely with no details on what you're gonna do and how you're gonna do it, not only chaos, but just detrimental to everybody that's, that's involved. So, I appreciate the time. Thank you for speaking.
Hello, my name is Heidi Nielsen. I own Doyle's Beach Boardwalk with my husband, Chris. We are zoned for RMF, which is multifamily use, and we have allowed use. We have no single homes around us. So, with that being said, we are also in a commercial district, just like a hotel would be. And so, we get the noise of the restaurants, we get the noise of the bars, and we kind of get it on both sides. And so, it's kind of frustrating to us to see that we're, no one wants to partner with us. I'm a little frustrated today because I'd like to see us all partnering together and trying to find a solution instead of just trying to kill one group. We pay our bed taxes, we pay a high property tax every year, we keep our units clean. Every time they are turned over, right now, they are Clorox, top to bottom. We keep the groups small. We also have put out with every group that comes in, in the contract, that they will social distance and they will abide by the laws. I have been here since March 10th in our unit state. We have local managers that manage them also. And I have been here on the property since March 10th. I've worked with the lifeguards. I've been at the lifeguard station. If you have been to 20th Street in Newport Beach, you know social distancing is working. The first weekend I was here I was a little discouraged. I thought, this is not gonna last. They boarded up the boardwalk, they boarded up the pier. There have maybe been 10 people on the beach since that happened. And the boardwalk is coming along. I spoke with a lifeguard today. He said, we like what's going on. We see progress. We've seen people social distance. And he said, plus we are educating people on this. They do not want to see it changed. Again, just like the gentleman before me, we're already operating at such a low occupancy rate that this will kill us. And, and where is the upside for us when we're still paying all our taxes and everything we do? I'm sorry, I'm trying to get through everything. Another interesting, as I was writing through Corona Del Mar today, I thought, there's a lot of construction going on. People are still having gardeners come in, which I'm pretty sure don't live in Corona Del Mar. I mean, where does, where does it lay out that some can come on the peninsula, some can come into Newport, but others can't? I don't see gardening as a necessity. So, I, I just think we're feeling a little hard done by. I called Lido House today. They said their occupancy is great. They're having a great season. Are they going to be shut down, or do they get to keep running whereas we don't? We are trying, as citizens of Newport Beach, to run an honest business here and to keep going. Our Newport Beach is a beautiful, beautiful place, and it should be shared and respected by all. Thank you.
Hello, staff and council, my name is Connie Adnaugh, and I'm a resident of Peninsula. It has, I have several thoughts as well. It's, it's a noble thing to try to provide housing for first responders and medical staff, but more and more, these folks are very compromised in their own health. And if they are staying in our homes, that's just almost an automatic potential for, for the virus to be extended into our private homes, the homes of the property owners. We, as the property management, certainly favor. Likewise, those same medical providers would be having to go to the grocery store just like anybody else. So, I don't understand why. It's great to, to, to help those folks, but I don't see that as a demographic to allow into our short-term rentals. As well, I have heard that this is for the protection and to, and to mitigate those that are going rogue with their own property rentals, that are doing one tour or one-night rentals against city code. And yet, what's the enforcement there? I would like to know what the enforcement is going to be with this particular resolution going forward, because what's to keep those, say, on Newport Islands that are not abiding by code? What's to keep them from continuing on what they are doing? How about enforcing what we have already? As everyone else has said, our, our numbers coming into town are so much smaller anyway, and the folks that we have observed, just from living there and then from, from our vacation rental business, they're here trying to quarantine as well and are abiding by the rules. I don't understand what the differences between the short-term renters and the long-term renters. It's the long-term renters that I see still partying out front, playing cornhole on the sidewalks, and enjoying a normal good time, not having to go to work or school. How about regulating them? Anyway, if you could address the, what type of enforcement is going to be put forth, I would appreciate knowing what that is, and then how you're going to implement that. Thank you for your time.
Hello, my name is Colleen Howes, and I'm a 42-year resident in Corona Del Mar, and I have a short-term rental. I am, this whole thing is so disturbing. Everything we're going through is a stress on everyone. I know it is on the lawmakers and the citizens, but I'm so disappointed that you're not trying to work together with us. I think together we could find a better solution than just banning short-term rentals. There's a real need for short-term rentals. In fact, I lost all of my vacation rentals. I had to refund everything, just like probably most of the people who have rentals did. And what I'm finding is, I'm renting to, like, a young girl that came for two weeks. She got back from college, and she wanted to quarantine in my place for two weeks, just in case she was sick, because she didn't want to infect her grandma. I've had people say, oh, I need to just, you know, have someplace to stay in between because someone might be sick. I mean, and that's a week or two weeks. I mean, 30 days, no one's gonna rent for 30 days. And, you know, there's so many other instances. The, the whole demographics of short-term rentals completely changed since this pandemic. And I think that we should find a better solution where we can work together and not have council members decide whom we can and cannot rent to in our own homes. And I, I know that there is a big decrease in people on the streets. The city's got all these great signs up, we're going one way. I think we're addressing it responsibly, and I don't think implementing this ordinance is gonna really affect the COVID epidemic is spreading. I don't think it's gonna stop it from spreading. And the other thing that I'm very concerned about is, in the ordinance, it says that violators can be arrested for violating this by the police. What is this, Gestapo or, you know, it's horrible. So, they're gonna come, police are gonna come arrest us if we rent to someone for two weeks that maybe is our relative? So, anyway, I just hope that we can find a way to work together as a team, as people in a small town, and, and not hurt other people. Thank you.
Hello, my name is Laura Shamlook, and I think everybody who will be there express the same concern that we have. This is gonna be putting a huge burden on us as property owners. And, you know, as everybody else mentioned, like, we lost the majority of our reservation. Everything has been canceled. We have refunded everything to the guests. And we got, like, one family, actually, they decided to come, like, from local. And all what they wanted to do, they just want to be away from their home. They have to be working from home. So, this is by itself, everybody is under stress, is under a lot of, you know, it's a set-up time for everyone. So, for them to feel a getaway, they brought their laptop, they brought their computer, they're working from home. But for them, at least, to be into a decent place, and they feel a little bit, not the anxiety that they would feel at their own home. And as everybody mentioned, like, in our contact, we think, like, you know, everybody, like, social distancing, it's basically sheltering in place, and all the places are being, like, sanitized, and people are staying in the place. And, like, the city took great measures in terms of, like, closing the boardwalk. And if everybody noticed, like, on the beach, you hardly see anybody. So, it's not like people coming and, like, going into groups on the beach. And actually, I noticed, like, when I, I'm there, like, I see, when I see bigger group, I see people coming in cars, like, local, they just want to be out of their home. They come, they go on the beach, and then they go back to their home. So, I'm, I'm really hoping that we can work together to find a solution without putting a huge burden on us into this difficult time that everybody is going through. Thank you.
Hi, my name is Shannon Moran. I'm the rental manager at Abrams Coastal Properties. On behalf of Dawn, I'm here, as well as myself, my own job is in jeopardy. I feel like in some respect, this meeting was, this urgency meeting that is unprecedented, is being held just to appease constituents, to basically follow the political policy, what you really need to do, and honestly, that you've already made your decision, which is unfortunate, but this, I'm just expressing my feelings right now. We don't know, we don't need to wait two quarters, which is what they say you need to wait to tell you that you are in a recession. We are in an economic recession. We are, economy is in a lockdown. Restaurants are closed, our businesses are closed, and now, the decision that you make today to ban short-term rental, rental, is going to have further impact on our economy. And is that what you really want to see? Our spring reservations have canceled. We are now receiving summer cancellations. Now, I'm not aware that, the summer cancellations, I'm not aware that they're, they're fear of the COVID virus. But what my feeling is, is that now there's such a financial impact that these people are also canceling because, guess what? They don't know whether they can afford to pay for it. So, this is a trickle-down ripple effect, and your decision today is really going to further impact. And I'd like you to really think hard, because there's gonna be some irreversible damage to the businesses and homeowners who expect that income and anticipate it to help them with their taxes. And furthermore, the fact that Abrams Coastal Rental Department, my job will be gone. Now, I don't mean to sound selfish, but it's true. That's just the way it's going, because we're losing all these cancellations because of COVID-19. We're taking all the recommendations. We're not having office hours. We're working from home. We're, we're following the policy, and we expect all our renters to do that as well. I really hope that you take a hard look at your decision, because I really think it's gonna have a further impact. And I hope that your decision may, after you hear from everyone here, will be different than what I expect, and that it will have a positive impact and not further negative. Thank you.
Hello, my name is Craig Batley, and we canceled, for a while, 70, canceled 70 reservations so far, gave all the money back. There's a couple of questions I have when I get done here. First of all, all the hotels can, can have guests. You have probably 100 projects that are residential construction, right next door to houses, with the construction workers working. You have projects throughout the city, on the streets, all those guys on Ballack Boulevard are working. You have people coming in the alley working. There's people all over the place. And I think your single-out short-term rental is a little bit, too little, too late. I think I probably have about five bookings left in April. So, it's, it's a consequence. And the other thing I understand, I just heard the reading from Aaron Harp, this is a non-ending, no end date, can't do any reservations at all for the rest of the year. I'm a little confused about that. The other thing is, you know, I think the city police force could ramp up a little bit of enforcement on this, on a lot of issues here. Or in some areas, they say there's, there seems to be some problem as far as a lot of noise and, and fractures like that. Why doesn't the police ramp up enforcement a little bit? The other thing that I have, I want to say, is, okay, to just blanket no short-term rental law, I suggest that you maybe limit, and, and ban one, two, or maybe three-night stays only. That eliminates a lot of the problems that might occur in the neighborhoods. There's a lot of people on the peninsula, all these construction workers are there, and I think that the impact of the very few people coming to the city through short-term rental anyway is minimal. And if you take it over the whole, you point at the whole city, there's people everywhere doing things. And I think it's really an unfair penalty for the short-term lodging people. Not, not to say anything about all the people who have flights, and they have, they've made plans, they're meeting neighbors, grandfathers, they're having a grandchildren come down, all gone. I suggest that the city rethink this a little bit. And the other thing they could do is perhaps require all incoming guests be delivered some sort of a, a policy that the city would develop from the, as the state of California. Here's the policy we recommend you follow for safety. I think it'd be part of the agreement, too. So, I know this has been rushed, but I think that I'd be a little bit of an additional thought brought to it. So, I'd like to get a clarification. Is there an end date? I understood it was just for April. And then, then you wait and see again?
Okay, someone asked that?
Okay, we'll make sure we get that answer at the end of the public comments. Next speaker, please.
Yes, hi, Jeff Bossen, Seabreeze Vacation Rentals and California Vacation Rental Association. I, as always, I mirror everything Craig said. But my big concern here is the different treatment of vacation rentals to hotels. Is public access to the Newport Beach altogether gonna be shut down? No. Are hotels going to have to stop taking bookings? No. When I asked this of Councilman Hurdman, he said, we haven't even thought about hotels because they are self-regulating. Are we given that option to self-regulate? Are we given the option to lock out our calendars for the first two weeks of April and not take any bookings? You can make that request of vacation rental operators. We could do the same thing that hotels do. We could do the same thing that hotels do. So I feel this is a specific attack discriminating against STLs and will likely result in Fourteenth Amendment people right violations and probably lawsuits. March and April are already gone. So what you do today, hopefully you all vote no on this, because it will, if you vote yes, and we announce to the world that short-term rentals, vacation rentals are banned in Newport Beach. One of the other speakers is absolutely right. Then all of the summer bookings start canceling. And if this all clears up in two weeks to a month, then we're able to get back to work. The whole summer is gone. I can tell you, having done this a long time from behind the scenes, even cloudy weather in June affects bookings in summer. Imagine announcing a ban on vacation rentals two months, three months before the summer bookings hit. It will devastate the STLU bookings. Please, please vote no. Thank you.
Hi, my name is Russell Adenoff, H B Realty. Posing, having an entire vacation rental industry of fourteen, sixteen hundred short-term lodging permits switching over to thirty-one plus nights furnished. It's not an ideal demographic. Kind of factor in supply demand. Obviously, there's people that have constructions or they've got like a temporary relocation, whether they've closed escrow and they're trying to find a new house to move in, maybe somewhere to stay. But you're going to have a huge rush of people leasing out these places furnished in the hopes that they're going to be able to go back to summer, which is uncertain at this time. People that typically are looking for a furnished rental outside of the examples that I gave you, which is extremely narrow, are people that maybe don't have their feet on the ground and aren't exactly people that you're going to want to welcome into the community either. But you're going to leave everybody no choice because they're going to need to justify the revenue and they need to pay their property taxes and mortgages. That's not getting forgiven. So thirty-one plus nights plus people with desperation is going to, may look a lot worse than having guests come in and finding a nice place to quarantine or escape where they're currently at already. We've always welcomed guests in the good times. We should not be taking them out out of fear. It's just, it's, it's a slippery slope, very slippery slope. As Craig mentioned, please consider enforcing something like three nights, four nights, even seven nights right now. That would just be something that'd be much more welcome without definitive end time. And I guess what I'm hearing is that hotels are not going to be considered in the same boat as vacation rental industry. That's a direct competitor with us. That's like banning bars, but keeping bars open that don't have a liquor license. It's, it's, it's really the same thing. Proximity to other people's houses, you know, they're, they're more than three feet, they're more than six feet. People aren't walking over to the neighbors and sneezing on them. They're staying inside the homes, treat them like citizens, treat them like residents, hold them to the, excuse me, the same standard. They're out of line, if they're, if they're doing things they're not supposed to, light them up, side them, you know, treat them as individuals. But if you're not going to treat the vacation rental industry and the hotel industry as the same, you're crippling one. And that, that is just a little suspicious and seem a little convenient, given the time. So yeah, please vote no. Thank you.
Hello, Mayor, Council. My name is Kevin Trissell. I own a duplex on the peninsula. The front unit I use is short-term lodging. I'm on pace right now to provide the city about $5,000 net tax this year. Multiplied that times the other fourteen hundred units in town, that's a big blow to the city. It's also going to be a blow to our restaurant industry. They're barely surviving right now on takeout meals. If we take the people off the peninsula and off the island, who's going to support those people? Going to dramatically impact unemployment. It's going to go up. We're allowed to operate, we can provide jobs, we can pay taxes. I can pay my mortgage, starting to be a selfish man. But people that we're going to impact, the home cleaners, the maintenance people, these are the people that already live paycheck, paycheck. And now you're looking like you may take it away from them. To give you a quick example, I have a family, a leasing deal, a family of four coming in next week for three nights. They have two April twins. They're at each other's throat for two weeks. They've been bunkered in, in their home. They're looking for a change of scenery. And they're renting my cottage because they feel it's safer than a hotel. You think about the recirculated air in a hotel, it's much like what you get on an airplane. And how do you get distance in a hotel lobby or in an elevator? But you can, renting one of our units. There's absolutely no scientific proof that staying in a short-term lodging in Newport has enabled the spread of the virus. I like one idea I heard, maybe we eliminate the one and two nights. Those are, that's the party crowd, brings in a lot of people, they're not distancing. The other thing I would suggest, whether than making an action tonight, is to develop an industry task force. Get about half dozen people from this room, get our staff, we can all zoom each other and let's come up with some solutions and some ideas rather than an outright ban. Thank you.
Hi, my name is Carmen Rosson. I support prohibiting the issuance of new short-term lodging permits. However, I would say go no in prohibiting the short-term lodging activity for those that already have a permit. As everybody said, the cancellations are about ninety percent, ninety-five percent. So those owners and the businesses are already in trouble economically. So the same way that you gave a lifeline to the restaurants where you allow them to do takeout food, although they cannot do dining in, and you issue an ordinance to allow bars to sell alcohol to take out. So why don't you work with us so that a few short-term lodging guests that come here can still participate and help the economy? Now, the big issue here, I'm not going to talk about financial burden. We all have been affected by this, but it's like you're trying to address the spread of COVID-19. Right now, the people are there that are creating crowding in Balboa Island, in Corona del Mar, in Balboa Peninsula. They are not the short-term rentals. They are the residents. And in the letter I wrote, who is overcrowding our streets? Residents that are now working from home, that want to take a break from their work hours to go for a walk, residents who have lost their jobs and now they are vacationing near home because they don't have a job. Residents who have school-aged childrens who are now being homeschooled and also they need to take a break with their kids. Many of our long-term rentals are students from UCI, from OCC, from CCC, from Bangor. They are on vacation. They are no, they don't have to go to the schools to go to classes and they are the ones that are out and about. The gyms are closed. Go to Marina Park daily. We have a group of eight people, three female, five male, that block the concrete walkway and they are lifting weights there. They are sharing equipment. You don't have those eight people living in the same household. So are they spreading the COVID-19? It's not just the visitors of short-term rentals that come and bring it. It's already in our community. Some visitors are actually afraid to come to Newport Beach because it's a hotspot for COVID-19. So don't kill the few opportunities that the homeowners will have and the property management companies will have people to come here. Besides that, we have the residents nearby cities. You can see last weekend, the first weekend that you closed the boardwalk, we had people from Escondido that they thought that the boardwalk, they were just walking through the barricades. And I said, please don't do that, walk on the beach. Where are you from? Escondido, Anaheim, Fullerton, coming to our beaches. They are the ones storming the area. We have also surfers. In one of the articles from OC Register, say, oh, a surfer that is from Fullerton coming to our beaches. So are you stopping those people? No.
If you can wrap up, please.
Yes. So also, what they said, a short-term lodging is open ended. So right now you're telling us, we cannot advertise the units for September, November, December next year? So please, if you can, check it out.
All right, thank you. Next speaker, please.
Council, my name is Jim Mosher. Since this was proposed on quite short notice and will, if adopted, go into effect today, I'm concerned about the aspects of the ordinance that are not actually required as responses to the emergency that's outlined in the preamble. First of those is the section two suspension issuing short-term lodging permits. Since a newly issued permit cannot be used during the duration of the ordinance, just like an existing permit, I don't see that that has any relation to the emergency or needs to be enacted at this time. Second concern is, as has been stated by some of the other speakers, the section three, which has written prohibits all activity related to rental of a short-term lodging, not just the occupancy of the unit, but it includes advertising, not just for the duration of the emergency, but advertising for the arrangement, possibly of a rental at a future time at which the emergency may have been ended. Again, that does not seem necessary as an emergency measure. Finally, I also think that owner-operators have spoken and sent in written comments raised valid points about short-term lodgings serving a valid function, people needing places to shelter or isolate such that the proposed restriction, medical responders only, is far too narrow. Thank you.
Council members, my name is Ken Rosson and I appreciate what's been said here today by those before me. I think you've heard a lot of good points. I've read some of the council members' comments on this article, on this issue. Let me just say, I agree with what Joy said, that I really think that we have a number of reasons on why our number in Newport Beach is higher, particularly troublesome the percent of residents by the number of cases that we have. Sure, we have a lot of people in Newport Beach that do travel both domestic and international. That opens them up to much greater opportunity to be exposed to this COVID virus. And I would like to get you to understand that many of the residents, myself included, that live on the peninsula believe we've got an issue still. I want to thank you for your efforts and what the city manager and her staff did for last weekend. You were effective in closing the boardwalk. I appreciate you closing the boardwalk now. Really, it's going to be indefinite until you say this emergency is over. I think that's a good thing, weekend alone is not enough. But I think that still is not limiting the people that come to our peninsula area enough. We heard from Councilman Hurtman last time we talked at the council meeting, he wanted to close Balboa Island. And the residents there strongly requested that. We on the peninsula would like to see some kind of stronger action taken where you do that. The people that are coming, that are short-term lodgers, my experience in doing this for 25 years and our business model at our unit that we do is we only rent to families. So all we're having come in is a family unit. We don't have these other issues that I hear about that are on Newport Island. They don't, they don't happen. So I would ask you to accelerate the short-term lodging rules that we've been talking about now for almost a year that have not been able to be formalized. Let's formalize those now. Let's go ahead and establish, at least during this emergency, a three to four night minimum. There should be no one, two nights. We don't need that kind of turnaround. Nothing wrong with having a limit to one rental per week then. That's how four nights would work out. I also agree with what's been said here by a couple of the people. We in this side of the issue really need your help on this next point. We need you to give us a fixed end date. And I would implore you to say, like my wife said before me, April's gone. Others here have said that. Why not stick something out there in May and say, hey, this is the time period? And give us that once we get close to that date. If you still feel we're not safe as far as the virus is concerned, rule that out another 30 days. So I'm also suggesting, just like the short-term lodging bill that you were looking at, let's stick with the two people per bedroom and then two in the living room. Have a maximum occupancy, not just for the nighttime, but all day long. So enforce this, that's the next thing we're not doing.
Okay, that's, that's been three minutes. Thank you very much. Any other speakers? All right, seeing none, we'll bring it back. Let me, let me touch on a few of the questions that came up. So Mr. Hart, let's start with deadlines. So the reason for, I'm, this is my understanding, so I want to make sure. The reason that we don't have a specific deadline in this is because we actually don't have any idea when the governor would lift an emergency order or we would lift a local emergency. And it seems daily that that date keeps shifting when we hear from, from the governor. Is that your understanding?
That's correct.
All right, if, in theory, and that, I'm not sure that, I don't know, but I want to at least throw this out there. If you were to put a date for coming back and reviewing this as a council, you know, we have a, we have council meetings in May. May 12th is our first meeting. If we were to put the, put a review date for the May 12th date, you know, extend it past, you know, a week so that we would at least show people that we're, we're reevaluating it, is there anything stopping us from doing something similar to that?
No, that'd be fine. What we could do is we could actually do the emergency ordinance through May 12th.
Well, I would, I would think it'd go past May 12th.
May 13th.
Yeah, well, probably at least a week longer than that. But I'm, but I'm just trying to work through and try to figure out the analysis. So that, that comes back to one of their primary questions, which I think I might actually have the same question after listening to this. As is currently written, it does appear that, I'm trying to understand the interpretation. So one of the questions is, are we in a position where, can they book? Like, for example, could they book into June right now or even into May without violating this ordinance as written?
Yeah, that wasn't the intent. I can add some language that clarifies that issue.
So in other words, in theory, I'm just going to throw this out. In theory, they could book a room two weeks from now. But if they actually allowed the occupancy while this emergency ordinance is in place, they would be violating the emergency ordinance.
That was the intent and I'll add some additional language to make sure that that's clear, that they could advertise for, or enter into agreements to book outside of the emergency.
So it's similar, essentially, I mean, it sounds like the intent is similar to what Mr. Mosher was trying to articulate, which is the intent of this ordinance is to bar the occupancy of short-term lodging while this ordinance is in place, not stopping them, as opposed to stopping people from advertising for some date in the future. But understanding that if that date in the future conflicts with, or is, conflicts with an emergency ordinance still in place, it would be violate, a violation of the emergency ordinance.
That's right.
Okay. And then on the enforcement, there are questions about enforcement. Would you mind talking about what that would, what, what it, if people were to violate this, what would the enforcement be?
So as drafted now, it would be a misdemeanor. So it'd be a criminal violation if they were to violate. Or it could be enforced pursuant to the administrative provisions or be administrated fine.
Okay. And then there are a couple of options, which are policy discussions. But before we get to the policy discussions, there are multiple people talking about banning specific night stays. If we were as a group deciding to go that direction instead, is there anything that, is there any legal issue that you foresee?
I'm sorry, I just didn't hear the.
No, that's a great, let me rephrase that. Let's assume that we went with Mr. Badley's proposal of four night minimum. Or I think there were more people than just Mr. Badley who said that, but I'm just calling him out. So if we went with a four night minimum, is there anything from a legal standpoint that would prohibit us from doing that?
No.
And then there was, there was one, one question that came up in the discussion about restaurants and the alcohol being allowed to be given off-site. My understanding is that that wasn't a city ordinance. That, that came from a state order. And then the alcohol and beverage control changed the regulations dealing with the alcohol being able to be sold as part of food going off-site. Obviously, I'm just going to say real quick to everyone, do not drink in your car. That, that has not been lifted, do not do that. But, but if you, if you purchase alcohol, you can now take it off-site, whereas usually you couldn't. That was a regulation that came from the state, right?
That's correct.
Okay. Okay, I'm, I'm done asking legal clarifications. Before I Before we move on to policy discussion, are there any other legal questions? I'm just going to look in the room and then ask the people on, on the phone. Now, okay, following up real quick, just to make sure, Mr. Duffield, did you have any legal questions?
None.
Mr. Herman?
None.
Okay. All right, so now we're going to go into discussion by council members. We don't have the ability to, to press in, so why don't you just give me that, start down there. Okay. Ms. Dixon, so would you like to start?
Sure. We don't have any microphone, so I just shout. The speaker's right there. So you're, I'm sorry, what? Just speak. Into this? Oh, all right. All right. Well, first of all, thank you, and thank you to members of the community, residents and, and business owners for coming today for this special meeting. The mayor may say this as well, why we did this. The next, if we had, if we decide to take action tonight, as a, it would be a faster process than if we waited to the next council meeting, which is April 14th, and then as a regular action, it would take several weeks or meetings for it to take any ordinance if we were to take action to take effect. The reason, in my opinion, that, and I appreciate the mayor calling this meeting, is that we have a crisis in this country, a health as well as financial crisis, as we all know. And we have a government, we have a federal order, we have a governor's order among many things, is stay home, stay in your neighborhoods, stay in place. We are a high destination city. Just to give you some data, we all know this, but last weekend, even though we thankfully closed the boardwalk, we had, according to the lifeguard count, approximately 28,000 people on our beaches, just on our beaches. Even though the normal, the regular average, and I should say the average number of beachgoers on a nice day in Newport Beach in April, March, April, is probably 100,000, and so we have seen a reduction in the number of visitors, which is good during this period of time. It is still 28,000 people walking, that they're not parking in our parking lots, they're walking through our neighborhoods. So the short-term, let me back up. Anything we can do, short of closing the beaches and closing, shutting down the city, or looking for ways to discourage people who do not live in Newport Beach to not come into Newport Beach. And one of the ways that can be done is what is happening through natural market economic forces, and as we've heard from all of the speakers today who are short-term and long-term rental property owners, business owners, that natural market forces have, have worked to, sadly, to diminish their business down to, we'd say, 90 or 95%. So I'm not pleased by that, but I'm glad that we didn't have to force that. The market forces created that. What I am concerned about, has been alluded to in the public comments, is that, that 5%, why are people still coming to Newport Beach when the governor, the president, the Orange County Health Agency have been vocally, consistently encouraging people to stay home? But because we have an attractive nuisance, which is because we are a beautiful city, people want to come. I understand that in a normal economic, health, healthy time, that's a wonderful thing. But we are fighting a global pandemic. Never before in the history of this city, I don't know what happened in 1918 with the Spanish flu, I don't know if there were short-term rentals there, we have never dealt with this extreme health situation. My heart goes out to any business owner. The restaurants are closed, the hotels are operating. I was surprised to hear that about Lido House. I heard that they were like at 20% occupancy. But anyway, everywhere, business is horrible. My concern is for business, yes, but for our residents. Why are we encouraging people to come for one or two or three night stays in our city when we know that it's just for short-term entertainment, party-related, just as Craig Badley mentioned, people are coming for parties? I think the market forces have been effective to get to 95%. I would like our industry to continue to ensure and discourage, if you will, and not promote. Someone wrote a letter in the stack of letters that VRBO is saying, the beaches open, the beaches are open in Newport Beach, to entice people to book a rental, a short-term rental in Newport Beach. I would hope that our property owners, short-term rental companies are not encouraging people to come to Newport Beach. We all have to work as a community, and if you are following the national discussion on this, it's community by community taking responsibility within their community to make sure that we are not encouraging visitors to come to our city. We are practicing all the social distancing. We will flatten this curve by doing the right thing. And so in my opinion, I want to protect our business owners. I also want to protect the health and safety of our residents. Why does anybody, I hate to say this, I love people that come at a normal time to visit Newport Beach, but we don't want to encourage people to come to Newport Beach during the pandemic period. So I support some limitation on that 5% that I believe are largely the one, two, or three-night rentals that are just coming in, they're not even being self-isolating, they're coming in to have a party. The people who are staying for a week or two weeks are obviously, for personal reasons, coming, and they'll, they can control their self-isolation. So I don't know how this discussion is going to go, but I'll just state what I, what I support. The market forces doing what they're doing, but we have to discourage through a special ordinance, the one, two, or three night stays. I, my ideal would be four or five night stays, because that really gets to people like once a week. I would also, I like what Carmen had indicated, maybe we put a limit on the number of people and the, on the occupancy. I know in Newport Island, there are 10 or 11 or 12 people occupying a short-term rental in one residence multiple times. That's obviously unacceptable for many reasons, and making the conformant compliance with social distancing mandatory. In the proposed draft ordinance, Mr. City Attorney, you talk about arrests. I, you know, I don't know if we need, my own opinion is, I don't know if we have to threaten arrest, but if they are in violation. Enforcement is a real issue, and I know staff is working overtime just dealing with the multitude of enforcement issues. I would hope that our rental companies would help the city and help our city staff and enforcement mechanisms to make sure that their tenants, whoever are here, that 5% are, are operating in a healthful, safe manner. So I, I don't know if this is a motion, but I'm prepared to make a motion to limit short-term rentals during a defined period of a governor's order, and it could be May 15th or 19th. I support whatever limit like that, so businesses can get back up and start taking, taking reservations for that when this is over. What else did Carmen say, too? I guess that was at four nights and a maximum maybe of six or one per week. But basically, I just, no one wants to be punitive here, no one wants to be super regulatory. It's simply to help our city stay safe and keep people who do not, people who come here, the college students are not in college, so they're coming, they want to come to the beach. Why? So that's where I am, and I know the community is really split with the residents versus the business owners, and I'm trying to find a way that we could support the residents, the neighbors, especially in areas like Newport Island where these party houses continue to exist. This very day, that's the 5% that are continuing to exist today. So thank you, Mayor. Appreciate that.
You bet. Thank you. So you made, you made a good point of asking for, talking about why I called the special meeting, and I think it's worth, I think it's worth talking a little bit about that real quickly before we, we keep down this path. I, one of the things that happens when you are not a public health agency during a public health crisis is making sure that you are following the public health agency guidance. They're experts, they are given statutory authority, they are designed to do exactly what they're doing right now, which is pass ordinances or pass, provide orders, provide guidance, and then make sure that cities like ours follow those orders and follow the guidance when, when it applies directly into our city. And the, to the state's credit and to the county's credit, they have issued a lot of orders, and they have issued a lot of guidance. And as you've seen over the last two, three weeks in Newport Beach, a lot has changed. And the reason for that is because we respond to every order, we respond to every guidance, and when we are seeing people not following the core guidance, which is social distancing, we have to take action. And so in our, in our public sphere right now, and I've listed them out, I actually need to look down to make sure I don't forget any of them, we've closed down playground equipment, fitness equipment, courts, which include basketball, tennis, pickleball, handball, volleyball, dog park, piers, the beach parking, peninsula boardwalk, Balboa Island boardwalk is now one-way, a lot of Ocean Avenue, except for the road itself, is closed down, and we're only going one direction now on part of the sidewalk. Goldenrod Footbridge is closed, and we continue to monitor to make sure it's, we're paying attention to how to make sure people are socially distancing, because we have got to decrease the spread. The faster we can decrease the spread, the faster the governor will lift the order, and the faster we can get back to what would essentially be normal life at that point. And so we are constantly monitoring, as, as Councilmember Dixon mentioned, this past weekend, on Saturday, we saw a 75% decrease, on Sunday, we saw a 90% decrease from what would be considered a normal beach day, and we still can do better. And I give a lot of kudos to our lifeguards for making sure that people, people know that, but it, it's, it's abundantly clear that we need to continue to amplify the message that the governor is sending out, which is it is safer to be at home right now. And we have got to continue to tell people that they've got, they need to follow that state guidance. I mean, for example, the state guidance right now from the state parks is stay home if you're sick, stay close to home when you get outdoors, this is not the time for a road trip to a destination, park or beach, venture out only with people in your immediate household, walk around the neighborhood and enjoy neighborhood parks, always maintain a physical distance of six feet or more when recreating in the outdoors. If you cannot maintain physical distancing, leave the park. Do not congregate in parks. The California Coastal Commission set out guidance when it comes to recreation on beaches. And so my point is, when we are, we're spending a lot of time, as you can imagine, at the city level, thinking through how to keep people safe, and then following expert advice. And so the first touchstone for us is always to go back to the state orders, the county orders, and make sure we're complying with those. Then we go to the guidance, which is not force of law, but it's really good, and trying to figure out, are we complying with those as well into our unique situations that we find ourselves in, in Newport Beach? Because as you can imagine, we have always been a city designed to bring people in and not keep people out, and trying to reverse that right now has been a Herculean task that has been undertaken by our staff, and they should be congratulated for all the progress they have made to date. So we received a lot of concerns from residents about short-term lodging, and I spent time looking through the orders and the guidance to see what the state has set, and the state is silent when it comes to short-term lodging. And so it comes to us as the enforcers in trying to make sure we are keeping task with what is going on inside of our city in response to the overarching goal that the state has said, which is safer at home, and when the parks department is saying, make sure you are only staying inside your neighborhoods when you're going outside and, and whatnot. I felt it was worth the time to have a conversation at the council level to talk about something that is not covered by the state, it is not covered by the county, and it is difficult for us to discern exactly what we need to be doing in this situation. And it's a whole lot better on an issue of this import to talk about it as a council rather than just put it entirely on our city manager to try to parse out and figure out what's right. And so I wanted to make sure that people understood, this is really hard, and we're trying really, really hard to keep people safe and stop the spread, and we've got to do, obviously, we need to continue to figure out how to do a better job day in and day out, and I think you're seeing the progress of all the things that the city has been doing, but like I said, it is a Herculean task already to have reversed 100 years of city planning to bring people in, and, and we're seeing the effects of, of doing that. So that's why it's really important we have put this out. It's really important that we received over 100 comments and emails that were at times very short, at times very long, and a lot of compromised discussions as well. So I just wanted to say, I appreciate that. I think, I think you're exactly right, on the right path on the, making sure that we are not bringing in one and two night stays. It doesn't make any sense, it's not consistent with the governor's order for us to be talking like that, and so I do appreciate that discussion. One thing I'll just point out, on the enforcement side, it is entirely possible, instead of, you know, talking about arresting people, it is entirely possible that we're actually looking more at fines and revocation of license.
Yes.
And so instead of, instead of seeing us, instead of going down the path of, you know, talking about arresting people, we can talk instead about the, the entire point of this whole exercise, which is to get compliance through, through administrative means. Anyway, that was really long, I didn't mean to talk that long. So anyway, it's something I've been thinking a lot about, as you can imagine, so I did want to make sure we talked as a council. All right, I will go to Duffy and Jeff in just a moment, but do you want me to just keep going down the path? Okay, all right, Mr. Avery.
Yeah, hopefully it's becoming clear that all of us are very concerned with, in this whole national emergency that we're in, having to try to work with our residents and our businesses to do the right thing, and it's a really kind of tortured process to get it right. And I think we're all conscious of not overstepping. I think everybody in this council is very concerned about being involved with the heavy hand of government and blinding on people's rights, stifling business. We have no interest in that, but I think our first responsibility as a council, as a city, is to the safety of all of our residents. And we are in the most significant national health emergency or emergency period almost in 100 years. So this is an exceptional time, and there are certain things that have happened that are beyond all of our imaginations, and it's not over. In fact, my understanding is, is that they expect the peak in California to be in mid-May. So it's still ramping up. So as a council, we have, it just weighs on all of us to do whatever we can to send the message, please stay home, don't come Newport Beach, just give it another month, take a month and give us a pass. And so vacation rentals by the very nature, therefore a different time, therefore a time when everybody wants to recreate and enjoy. And this is, this is not that time, at least to travel and do it. So by being open to short-term rentals, especially those of a weekend or three days, we're sending a message to, to still come down and, and have a good time at the beach. And that's a message we've been sending for generations. Balboa Island for 100 years has been twinning, and it's spread out throughout the town, and it's great, but this is an exceptional time, and so it can't be business as usual. And I think what we've been doing is gradually trying to not overstep, not get ahead of the state, not get ahead of health agencies, but consider what the mandates are, consider what the guidance is, try to implement at a local level for everybody's protection. And there is no one in this town that has not been affected financially by this epidemic. So there's no one group that stands out as being hurt by this. We're all hurt by this, every one of them. My staff, we let five people go yesterday, and made it to the very last of us had to do that, and it's a terrible thing to do, and it's been happening, we've been getting these warrant letters, it's been happening right and left, all these businesses, large and small, throughout the community, and you look at these lists of people that have been let go, it's absolutely stunning. So we're all losing here. This is just something that we all have to acknowledge, that there are going to be losses, financial losses, losses of enjoyment, losses of seeing our friends, it's all a part of it. So I'd like to think that we could all work together, as we're trying to do here. You can see it live right now, the council's working toward a, a solution that is on the face of it quite a bit less onerous, and taking in the suggestions of the speakers, and we're going to try and get it right. But I think the message is clear, to stay in your home, recreate near your home. But I think the message is clear, to stay in your home, recreate near your home. And uh that's something, that's a guideline that I think we, we should follow. And certainly we should not encourage people to travel to Newport Beach. And we know we can't physically stop them. And so we just need to send a message. So somehow we've got to get there. And somehow we've got to try and also provide some, some relief for businesses such as those that operate short-term rentals. We want to do that as well. If we can parse it, we will in a way that accomplishes both of our objectives. So uh I'm encouraged by this discussion. And hopefully we can get to a place where uh we can do something that signals that we're not planning short-term rentals for the long term. We are just, we don't know where this is going to go. We don't know whether this is going to end in a month. But I think all of us have a feeling of dread that this could go on longer. And we've all heard the different scenarios. The fact of the matter is, we just don't know. So I completely agree with the idea of setting a date. And so people can plan and we can all say, yeah, I'd love to go to Newport Beach in May if the emergency is lifted. You need to get people, the entire community, all of California, all of the country, rolling in the same direction. And uh so far, we're not there yet. Thank you.
All right. Thank you. Ms. Brenner.
I think, I think what you all said is absolutely accurate. And the thing that keeps coming home to me is that these are short-term measures. And the more we can suffer in the short term, then the sooner we can get past this so that in the long term, we can get back to business. We know, we understand that these operators are losing about ninety percent of their revenue right now. But if this goes on for a long time, that's going to be significantly worse than if we suffer and really take extreme measures now so that as soon as possible, we get back to a hundred percent. Because not only are our short-term rental operators suffering right now, but our restaurant owners, our business owners. So if we allow more visitors to come to Newport Beach, which prolongs this emergency, then we are penalizing our other businesses. We're penalizing our restaurants, we're penalizing our shop owners, we're penalizing our whole community the longer we let this go on. So to take extreme measures now, it actually is going to help the short-term rental operators too. Because as soon as we can possibly get back to business as usual, hopefully that will start to reap back some of these losses. But we're all living in fear right now. I know there, a lot of them are living in fear about losing their properties, their mortgages and, and that sort of thing. But all of our community are concerned about losing their life, are losing their loved ones. And we're all concerned about losing our freedoms. This is a whole new world. People keep dealing with war analogies. And the short-term rentals, the analogies to the Trojan horse of continuing to break in people that we don't know if they are infected or not, nobody knows. We don't have tests to tell us. If we had tests to tell us if they had, had been involved there, then we could, and that may come sooner than the emergency action is supposed to. We can get to the point where we can determine who's infected and who's not. And we can see if we can adjust them and we want to take any measures we can to help all of our businesses, our short-term rental people, our long-term. We have people all over town that are at long term as well. We need to benefit that as well. If I could, if I had the option of shutting down day trippers to Newport Beach over short-term rentals, I would take that a thousand times over because we can't stop the people who are coming in just for the day. And we've just learned um a study recently that shows that the ocean breeze can actually carry these particulates further than six feet. So there's a lot of information that is continuing to come out about all of this. We're not trying to penalize anybody. We're really trying to protect all of us. And, and part of what keeps coming home to me is that there's short-term pain and there's a long-term gain. And we just really have to fight the bullet right now. This is, this is war. We've never experienced anything like this in our life. And we have to take measures that aren't, it's not business as usual. These are not just little adjustments that we're going to do to our short-term ordinance. These are drastic measures because this is micro death. And we've got citizens all over Newport Beach that are worried about this. And uh it's our job to protect our residents. That's our first, that's our first job. So, and, and I like the idea of having an end date, having an end date to this. We come back and look at it and say, you know, okay, you know, the curve is flattening, we're getting the tests available. I mean, there may be all kinds of changes by the time we get a little ways down the line, but just for right now, that we can just take drastic measures that will make everyone feel just a little bit more safe. And I think that's, that's what we want.
Okay. I appreciate that. I've been, just so everyone on the council knows, I've been keeping track of suggested modifications as we've been moving along. So I'm going to keep doing that and uh, and then at the end, we can talk about what I've been hearing. Uh, go uh Mr. Hurtman next, and then Mr. Duffield.
Thank you, Mayor. Um, I'm just going to keep my comments real brief. I don't want to be repetitive. Plus, I think probably everyone in the audience and probably everyone who's listening has sent an email to the city council. Over the last few days, I've responded to every one of them. So most people know where I'm coming from on this. There's only, there, there's already a million cases globally and twenty-four percent of them are in the United States. We've all been ordered to wear masks. Today, uh, there was an indication from the president that there might be a national stay-at-home order. New York City had three hundred cases two weeks ago. Today, they've got fifty thousand cases. There's new information out now on how this virus is being spread. Uh, I, I hate this prediction, but I heard it today that we're just two weeks away from where New York City is now. We just need to shut down everything that creates social interaction in this city. So that the city of Newport Beach can say that they were not responsible for the spread of this virus and the predicted number of deaths that are out there. And Dean talked about concerning this virus. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hello?
Yes, Mr. Duffield, we can hear you. Uh, do you have?
Yeah, I, I would just like to comment that I uh support the minimum four-night stay. And I support an end date, May fifteenth, seventeenth, whatever, whatever it's going to be, plus a rollout of another thirty days, should that be necessary. And I also would like to just say something I haven't heard anybody talk about. But um I would encourage seeking relief from the, our federal government. Your, your bank can uh direct you to a program for your business that will help you get through this. I did it. I'll share with you what we did. We, we are looking forward to um a package from the federal government that uh involves supporting our uh lease for uh two and a half months and our payroll. So um it um is a great program. And I think uh there's lots and lots of opportunity out there for people to seek that type of uh uh program if you qualify. So it really suggests you discuss that with your bank. Um, I, I'm uh without this uh help, I would be in dire straits. But we uh currently have qualified and we're looking forward to um this package when it does arrive. It's going to allow me to keep all my employees and it's going to pay the lease for a few months. Anyway, um, I do support the four-night and an end date and um look forward to trying to resolve this in a way we can all uh um be safe and get through this uh as fast as we can.
All right.
Thank you.
Okay, uh, let me see if I can summarize and just to piggyback on a couple of comments that uh about making sure that we are doing everything we can at the city level. I, expanding even farther than what I talked about earlier about making sure that we are following orders to the T, following guidance as it applies to us. I will say, uh, I have reached out to our, our local state senator. I have uh reached out to our local supervisor and asked them to follow up with their respective health agencies to find out if there is anything that Newport Beach is doing or not doing, that they would like to see done differently. And so far, I've not received any, any specific information about what we're doing or not doing that they'd like to see done differently as a health agency. Uh, but I'll continue to follow up on that because it is, of course, very important that we are, are following that expert advice. So.
Can I just make one comment?
Absolutely.
Um, if we're going in the direction that we may be going to establish a four-night minimum, let me just say on the record publicly, imploring our property management companies to not take advantage of now they can market, say, okay, you could come to Newport Beach if you stay four days more. We are not, my, if I support this direction, I do not support opening up the city to short-term rentals for four or more days. Keep it as it is, the way it's been at ninety or ninety-five percent. Do not, please, I beg you, for the safety and health of our community, do not take this as a possible incentive to now you can open up rentals. Please do not. If we, if I see marketing to encourage people to come to Newport Beach because the city council has uh made these changes, it is not a license to increase your business. That is not what this is about. We're just trying to go after that slice of the market that is not contributing anything positive to the city of Newport Beach and the overnight stays. Thank you.
Understood. All right, here, here's what I heard. Okay, here's what I heard as a matter of summary. The modifications would essentially say four-night minimum. Um, if you are in place now, you can remain. I think right now it says you'd have to leave by April tenth, but of course, if you're staying longer than a week, you're not exactly the target demographic we're concerned about, which is the one, two, three nights. I, I was using that one off of you, Ms. Brenner, so.
It's, it's the county will.
Yes. Okay. And I just want to make sure I understood that point. Okay? Uh, we would still remain with the exemption for healthcare and first responders. Uh, the idea, of course, behind that is to remain as a um, we, this does, a number of people wrote in saying, make sure short-term lodging is part of the solution. And that would be part of the solution. Uh, I would recommend May twentieth be the date with a review of May twelfth. I'm sorry. Uh, I mean, we would have a review at our city council meeting on the twelfth. Does that give you a heartburn?
Well, I thought it might just be easier, rather than having to re-adopt the ordinance, to leave the ordinance in effect for the entire emergency. But I added the clarifying language that people could advertise for rent and that they could um enter into bookings as long as those didn't occur while the emergency is in effect.
I understand your point.
And you can always rescind the, the ordinance as well.
I understand your point, but I, but what I've also heard from our business owners is that an end date, at least, at least an end date with understanding that we would be reviewing it beforehand is very important to their own business. And I've also heard from council members that as a matter of policy, that makes sense. So I do understand that if we needed to bring it back on the twelfth, we would have to re-adopt it. And if the emergency is still ongoing, it would remain an emergency ordinance. Am I wrong?
Well, it depends. If you put a hard end date on it, then the emergency ordinance would, would basically no longer be effective as that hard, of that hard end date.
Yeah, my point though, and this is important, my point is that if we set an end date on May twentieth, with an understanding that no matter what, we are bringing this back on May twelfth, that would give the council and our businesses, that would give them eight days to make sure that they, there's a different, there's a lag of eight days that, because if we, if we set it up, for example, May thirteenth, when we're reviewing on May twelfth and we re-adopt it, but they booked things on the thirteenth, that's going to be a problem. Um, so practically speaking, what I'm suggesting is if the emergency is still ongoing in May twelfth, and it may very well be, but if the emergency is still ongoing on May twelfth, re-adopting it during a, a local emergency, um, and then setting another end date, I don't know when, but that's, that's my thought process. And I want to make sure though, that from your perspective, that would work.
I think that works.
Okay, so I, I'm just going to recommend May twentieth. If I'm, if I'm mistaken on, on people's thoughts, that would be what I would think. In terms of enforcement, I would, I would uh suggest a three-step. Um, the first would be a fine. I don't know what the, what fine do we have set up currently for this?
So I could just basically tie it back into the municipal code where it's a, a fine of a hundred dollars or we set for any amount you want.
I'm going to suggest a thousand dollars.
Yes, yes.
For first violation, for first violation of this emergency ordinance, I'm going to suggest a fine of a thousand dollars.
Yes.
The second step would be um suspension for one year. And the third would be revocation because when we pass emergency ordinances, people need to listen to emergency ordinances. So that's, that would be my recommendation.
All right. So just to confirm that I heard you right, it's, it's a little hard to hear. Um, so a thousand dollars for a first violation, suspension of one year for a second violation, and revocation for a third violation?
Yes, of this, of this.
Of this ordinance.
Of this ordinance. Okay, um, did I miss anything?
How do we keep rentals from my, apropos of my earlier comment, how do we keep a lid on this?
You don't. Yeah. So here's another part of this, is that some, we need people to do the right thing. And so, so I'll take it for four days, but instead of for four days, it's a hundred and fifty dollars a day. They take it for four days for a hundred dollars a day and they just don't do the last two days. They leave. So, you know, you can't control these things. This is where it's so important that people do the right thing.
The management.
And that's the management of the business. This is striking a deal here. But there's lots of ways around this. You could easily bring people in for one day or two days, change the rate, have the contract for four days. And they just leave after the second day, after their party. So there's nothing about that. And the other side of this to me is we're so stretched in this city, from an enforcement standpoint, everybody knows it. Um, that when people, I've heard from so many residents, they're so frustrated when a party's going on. And police quite just, just quite correctly are doing more important calls and they can't get down to it. And it really is an issue. And so I think the vast majority of management companies, the vast majority of short-term people, uh, renters and, and individuals that are doing it on their own are, are, are good players. But we need to be going after and trying to take care of the unprofessional side of this. Or we have people that are just um not playing by the rules.
Should we go to seven?
I think that's going to happen here to some.
Should we go, you make a, should we go to seven days?
Uh, I don't think it makes any difference.
Sorry, you need to speak.
I'm sorry.
That's okay. So.
All right.
And don't, don't, yeah, I can see you waving, Ms. Urban. Don't worry. I haven't, I'm not going to close it off, Mr. Duffield. I promise.
I think if we get into this three to four day thing, it really doesn't matter. We've got the same problem now. People coming and going. That's, that's the issue, is people coming and going during this emergency period. And the governor has said stay home, and the president has said stay home. Like, who are we to say, oh, come on down and stay just for three or four days? It's okay, even though the president and the governor said stay home.
Uh, Mr. Hurtman.
I agree with that comment, Councilwoman Brenner, one hundred percent. We are all on a stay-home order. The other thing too, Will, um, with that third uh violation, you said revocation, and I assume you mean revocation of their short-term lodging permit?
Yes.
And for how long? Year, forever? That needs to be defined.
That's a fair point.
The waiting list.
Is there a waiting list?
Yeah.
Okay, uh.
That's a good point. They have to go back and.
No, that's, that's a good point. That's a good point, Mr. Hurtman.
You know, I really want this, I really want this to happen. I really want this to happen for the people in this city so that we're being responsible in terms of protecting it. And then if we're going to allow people, if we're going to allow a turnover of every three or four nights, what's the purpose in doing this in the first place? We're maintaining the business in place. We're not accomplishing what we want to accomplish, which is basically protecting our citizens from the spread of this virus and possible death. We're going to do it. We need to do it. You know, I, I operate, I have a, I have a, a couple of rental units and. You know, I, I operate, I have a, I have a, a couple of rental units and, um, recently I, I turned my short term lodging permit into the city. Uh, I canceled all my reservations. I returned deposits and I've shut down. And I've done that so that people outside of the city are not coming into this city and possibly exposing anyone unnecessarily. And yeah, it's causing a hardship. It's part of my monthly income. Uh, but I'm, but I'm, I'm gonna, I'm not spending as much money as I used to. I'm confined to my house. Basically all I'm doing is paying for food and, and paying bills. Uh, so I'm not spending the money I normally do. It's, it's, it's sacrifice time. So, um, that's where I'm coming from on this. We just need to close the industry down for as short a time as possible.
I have a thought.
Okay. Uh, Ms. Dixon?
Given that a two week, 14 days is the self isolation period. If we allowed a minimum of two, 14 days. Someone comes in in a short term rental, they have to, they have to stay for two weeks. That's the minimum. They can't leave early because they're going to lose a lot of money. But they will be, under the rules that will be provided here, that they have to self isolate. What do you think about that? No?
What if they're a carrier, Diane?
Well, then that's what I say, that they have to self isolate for two weeks, which is the 14 day period.
Let them do it at home.
All right. Um, I want to make sure. Mr. Duffield, what are your thoughts?
Well, I'm listening, but, um, I, uh, I don't, I think what we came up with was a good compromise, but, um, I'm listening. I'm all ears. I, I, it's hard to believe that we could solve this with this decision. So I don't think that, um, what we're going to do, is going to be something that is forever, obviously. And yes, sacrificing, we're all sacrificing, uh, but, uh, it just seems like if you can keep that Lido hotel open, I, I just don't understand. It's pretty crazy. We let him stay open and we don't let these guys have some income. How do you explain that, Jeff? How do you let the Lido hotels stay open?
If, if we have the authority to close it, we should do it. I'm, I don't know if we have the authority to do something like that.
Well, as long as they're open, they're, they're not doing what you want. They're not.
Exactly. Yeah.
So, I mean, that's my thinking.
You're, you're absolutely right, Duffy. You're absolutely right.
Ms. Brenner?
Um, Duffy, my, my concern about that is, um, that the hotels are slightly out of the neighborhood as most of them are. They're not right next to, they're not on a patio three feet away from the residential neighbor. And I don't know whether we have the right, I, I believe that's an attempt of the governor's order for the hotels to be shut down. I, I don't think. Karen, do we have the ability to do that?
So there was, there's some, I guess I don't need a mic. There's some open questions about that. My understanding is that the hotel industry has checked with the governor and that they've confirmed that hotels are not to be shut, shut down during this emergency. Um, but there, there has been some questions raised about that. I actually placed a call to, uh, the governor's office yesterday to get some more clarity.
Could we ask a question of some of the property management company? How would they?
Well, yeah. What, what question would you like to ask? And I'll pull someone up.
All right. If we have a four night minimum.
Okay.
How would they interpret that in terms of their ongoing business?
Hey Craig, why don't you come on over to, uh, public comment and then we might ask a couple of other folks, but, um, what kind of renters, what kind of people rent four nights or more?
The, uh, the problem, uh, guest stays are the short term ones, one, two, maybe three nights. You know, four, five, six nights, they're all families. We only rent to families. So, if you made the 14 night, you might as well just say, no, nobody can come because, uh, you know, we don't have four, we don't have two week short term stays. Uh, these days people can't, can't hardly get away for a week. I, I'm fine with one or two or three nights, maybe four, the outside. Otherwise, uh, there, uh, you know, and, and this, and you have to have an end date. Otherwise, you, you can't make a booking in July or August or September. So, any, any, any questions?
Yeah. Go ahead.
No, I just asked, would they be marketing now that they think that this is permission to market?
Yeah. I mean, let's, let's talk about Diane's concern about marketing out on, yeah, through the, through, let's, let's assume for a moment that we are looking at May 20th. What, I mean, do, do people, would people be marketing to people between now and May 20th for, uh, for short term rentals?
No, I think once you put the moratorium in, anybody who tries to book between now and May 20th is violating the ordinance and they're, they're, uh, in violation. I don't see a problem with that. Uh, but if you want to book in, let's say July 10th, that'd be allowed. And then, and like you said, it'd be reviewed at the next council meeting to see if you need to roll it for some reason or another. I know one thing. If this whole shutdown for the country doesn't, uh, you know, break loose within another month or even two months, the, uh, there's no economy left. Nobody's even going to come anyway.
Okay. I'll tell you what, I've got, I know someone else is kind of looking, is gentleman in the blue shirt, I'm looking way down there. Would you like, yeah, okay. Why don't you come on up? And you're, for you, I mean, what are you seeing for, for people who book in for four nights?
So for us, I mean, I've talked to the operators who rent from us. We have multiple operators. And what they're telling me is that the one and two night people that are coming are number one, booking last minute. So by doing what you're doing, or talking about what you're doing with having a four night minimum, you're just going to eliminate these one and two night stays, I think by doing what you're trying to do. Number two, what they've told me is that there's what I would call a hackle fest going on, which is that people are desperately trying to rent whatever they can to get some amount of income. And so something that would rent for three or $400 a night is now renting for a hundred dollars a night. And then by the time they pay an ARB and DC, by the time they pay the city tax, by the time they pay a cleaner, it's like zero anyway. So I think that you're not going to get a lot of slack from, uh, doing the one or two or even three night and getting rid of those in the short term. And you'll accomplish, I, I think a good chunk of what you're trying to do from what I heard, Diane talk about, which is to eliminate the weekend warrior kind of a traffic. I, I just, I, I, I heard Mr. Hirdman's comments about eliminating it all, but I, I just don't think that eliminating the short term rental market 100%, just killing this whole section of the economy, putting mom and pop people jeopardy of their mortgage, putting businesses basically out of, out of business, putting people out on the street who work for these businesses is going to do anything to dramatically make a difference. You already cut, not you, the city, but the epidemic has cut 95% of all hotel stays. I own pieces of two hotel hotels. They're at 95% empty. Everything's closed, all the amenities. So unless you're going to go to a hotel and stay inside your tiny little room, I don't even know how that, but the, the, you're already at 95%. So by doing what you're doing now, you're just chipping another piece off and, and I think you're going to get down to two or 3%. But you're giving people some life to be able to have something left. And, and to Mr. Duffield's, I think it was him that made it, uh, uh, in terms of being able to apply for assistance with the government, these people cannot because that assistance with the payroll protection program is for payroll. So you have to submit and it is two and a half times your payroll. So if you had a business and you laid off people or you kept people, they need to be compensated for that. But if you had, if you're an operator and you're trying to rent, you have no employees. And so if you lay off the person who's the cleaning lady, then she has to go file for unemployment and that's the end of it. You don't get compensated for it. I think there's a lot of other dynamics that you're talking about when you start just doing it 100%. Hey, let's stop. I, I, if you're looking at the, the comment that was made about 28,000 people on the beach versus 100,000, I think if you just eliminated short term rentals, you'd have 27,500 people on the beach because there's not that many short term rentals going on. What we're trying to do is just make sure that the industry as a whole doesn't cave in on itself completely and that these people have an opportunity in these businesses to be able to rebound when you turn the lights back on. And even when you turn the lights back on, it won't be, hey, everybody's back. Right?
Okay. Thank you. Appreciate that. All right. Let's bring it back. Um.
Just by making one off, regarding the, uh, the 100 or 200 residential construction projects that are going on next door to the resident.
No, Craig, stop. You're, it's, thank you. So this is, that's, that, that goes, that gets into a totally different discussion about it. Essential services is defined by the governor. So we're going to not get into that. Okay. So I think at this point I'll entertain a motion. Oh, I'm sorry, Mr. Hirdman.
Yeah. Just wanted to comment. Um, mortgage relief is out there. Uh, I took advantage of it. I made a very simple phone call to my mortgage lender yesterday. I asked him a simple question. You know, during this pandemic, is there any, any allowances for mortgage relief? Got an immediate answer on the phone. So my lack of income from rentals, uh, is being offset by mortgage relief does not have to be caught, that does have to be caught up, excuse me. But at least for a couple of months, months until this is over, uh, that is available.
Right.
Okay. Yeah, I appreciate that. All right. Ms. Brenner?
I'd like to make a motion.
Okay.
I'd like to make the motion that we enact this ordinance to make the changes that we have motioned and it is a short term ban on short term rentals.
Okay. So can I just run through it again?
Yes.
Do you mind? Okay. So, because I want to make sure it's clear for whoever's going to make the second. Okay. Motion is adopt staff recommendation with the following modifications. Four night minimum stay in place now can remain through the termination of the short term stay. Or keep the healthcare and first responders exemption. We will terminate this ordinance May 20th with a review for potential extension or termination on May 12th. Enforcement would, uh, a first violation would be a thousand dollar fine. Second would be a one year suspension and the third would be revocation with the inability to reapply for a license for one full year.
Okay. I need some clarification on one thing before, um, I would entertain a second.
That's fine. That's why I did it. Go ahead, Ms. Urban.
Yeah. Thank you. Oh God, now I can't remember what it was.
That's okay. Which I, I'll run back through. That's okay. Four night minimum. If in your, if in place now can remain.
Oh, I remember now. I remember now. Okay. Somebody, it's the in place. Somebody's in a short term rental right now. Uh, they're supposed to move out on Saturday. Are we saying they can't move out?
So what we are, that's a, that's a good clarification. So what we're saying is they absolutely can, should, and we would probably pick their suitcases up and move them out ourselves.
Okay. Then, then, then let's, we need to add to that then, that the place, then we're saying that the, that the unit can be rented for another four nights. That's what we're saying with this. We're, we're not accomplishing what we're trying to accomplish here with this four night thing. We're trying to keep people out of our city. And I really want to vote for this, but I can't, I can't vote.
It can't be rerouted.
Okay. Then, okay. Um, that's fair. So if we remove, if we remove that out.
Remove what out?
I'm sorry. If we remove out the, the, if in place now you can remain. Oh, okay. Go ahead.
The confusion is if somebody moves out, can somebody else move in for four days? Because that's.
Can't be rerouted.
What is, yeah, that's the problem is I think people are going to be confused by the four night minimum if we're, are we saying no new occupants through the time of our emergency?
Yes. Exactly.
That, that does, okay, wait a second. That actually is dramatically different than what I just said. So, so what you're saying is that.
No, once people move out, that's.
When, when a person, when a, when a renter moves out that, I'm sorry. Now I need clarification of this. Are you saying that they, that a, a short term lodging can only be rented one time between now and May 20th?
That means we're not allowing new occupants to come in during, just during this year.
Yeah. I think that's significantly different. So I think what's being.
Yeah, that's different.
Is, is that they would still be able to rent out the units, but it'd have to be for four consecutive days, not a complete ban. I think that's.
Consecutive nights.
Nights. Yeah.
Uh, yeah, that's, okay. That's.
I, I know. That's what people were saying. I think that's what.
Let me clarify. Yeah, no, no, because that, that is a very different motion than, than what I just described. So if we're, if we're saying, because my understanding is of what we've been talking about right now. My understanding is that if someone stays for a minimum of four nights and then they went through the deep cleansing process that they go through, it could be rented again. So what we're really looking at through, throughout, so we're, I mean, we're talking about a six week period right now. So we're talking about in theory, a total of maybe six turnovers total for a unit if they were consecutively rented, which is not going to be the case anyway because they're down 90%. But that, that's how I understood our discussion. So if that's not how they are, then.
So let me just follow up on that. The reality is just as the gentleman was saying, there is no market and the market is the only active, my interpretation, active market currently is for the one night stays and we're considering extending that to four nights.
And so what?
So we're eliminating the market demand for short term rentals in Newport Beach for the next period of time until May 20th.
By doing what, Diane?
Right now, the market, as I said in my earlier comments, the, the natural market has limited occupancy to 5%. How do we get to 100% of eliminating occupancy in short term rentals? To clean these people out of our city who aren't residents. So I'm going, I'm going after that 5% and most of, I believe most of that 5% who are still renting and, and establishing rental agreements are the one or two night stays. And so that is why I've been directing to go after that 5%. Then we pretty much captured 100, nearly 100% of the market that because of the economy, because people don't have the money, they can't travel to close it down without saying we're banning it, but we're eliminating that four night stay, which is the active part of the market right now.
We're eliminating that one or two night stay you mean, by implementing a minimum of four nights, right?
That is correct.
Okay.
Right. Okay. But to be clear.
Right.
There, there are two very different discussions going on right now and I want to make sure we are talking about both of them because it's very important that we get this right. There is on the table, the option of requiring a four night stay, which would dramatically decrease it. It wouldn't go to zero, but it would go, it would certainly decrease it and get rid of all the renters that we, it could. So I'm, but I'll, I'll get there in a second. So right now, in, in the event of where they are at the moment, um, they can rent to one night or 29 nights. Um, and based on that entire range, they're down in between 90 and 95%. If they, if the requirement went to a four night minimum, that means that they could do a four night stay, turn it around and rent again another four night stay. The other discussion that's on the table is finish out whatever rent you, rental you've got going right now, but you're not allowed to rent again until the ordinance is lifted.
There you go.
And that is, that is a very different discuss, that is a very different thing. And I, and I want to make sure I'm getting this because if that's the motion, if that's the motion you're making, there is no reason to have a four night minimum because at that point it's, it's just a straight moratorium or it's not a moratorium, but it's an emergency ordinance prohibiting the re rental, the occupancy of a short term lodging between now and essentially May 20th. And I, but, but I, but I'm, but I'm making sure I'm understanding is because, because if that's the case, then you, you, there's no reason for us to have a four night minimum in that. So that's.
I have a slight difference of opinion.
Okay. Then go ahead and Ms. Dixon. But I'm going to come back and I'm going to make sure.
All right. Well, this is what I.
I'm sorry. Hang on just, just one second. I want to make sure I, um, everyone is understanding the order. I'm going to do this. So I'm going to, I'm going to kick it over you for clarification or, or difference of opinion. And then I'm going to go back over to Ms. Brenner who has made a motion and I'm going to restate it and then so that, which is, I'm really glad I did. And then we're, I'm going to entertain a second and then we'll kind of. Um, and then we're, I'm gonna entertain a second, and then we'll kind of work through the procedure on that side, but anyway.
So, so perhaps this, so the existing rentals that will conclude, terminate in the next X number of days, that unit cannot be rerented through May twentieth.
That is, that is her motion.
But, but there could be other potential renters for four-night minimum.
That is not her motion.
I know, that's what I was saying. Let the people go, go. And if there is, if there is a market for four-night minimum, that's what we would be permitting.
Yes.
Okay.
It defeats, I mean, it's fine ordinance if that's what you want to do, but it defeats the purpose of what we set out to do.
Absolutely. We allow, we allow.
Jeff, hang on, I promise, we'll get, we'll get there. Just, just hang on one second, because it's, it's, she's about to make a motion, and I just want to.
And so, and so let me fix this. The bad bit is that we, we know in the past, the one, two, night rentals have been our problem. What we don't know about the future, and what we do know is that there are a lot of college students that are out living with their parents, that this is spring break again, there's no more school. We don't know, I don't care whether they stay four nights or two nights or a week, they're gonna be a problem for us. And that's gonna create a problem, plus the more homebound people are, the more they're gonna be looking at, maybe we should take four days and go to Newport Beach, just to, so I could see the market decreasing with this ordinance as we get further into this. Rather than telling people, no, stay home, now we're saying, oh, well, if you want to come for four days, then it's okay if you kind of bring the germs down for four days, but not for two days. You can't bring the germs for two days, but you can bring them for four days. So that's, that's the point. Either we're looking at this as a ban on short-term rentals temporarily, just temporarily hoping to kickstart the recovery, so that we can get everybody back to a hundred percent, or we're dribble grabbing it and say, okay, well, you know, maybe, maybe it won't slow the virus quite as quickly, but it will still slow the virus if they only go for four.
Last comment, please.
So I, I will make sure you get a comment, Mr. Hurdman. So, but, but the procedural point where we are right now is Ms. Brenner has made a motion, and I'm going to restate it for just, just for clarity, and then as soon as someone makes a second, um, I'll entertain discussion.
Okay, all right, got it. Thank you.
Yep. So, points could never lawyer sometimes. All right, so we're gonna have, motion is on the table as follows. The mo, if there is a current short-term lodging, uh, in place, and that lodging can continue until its contractual end, at which point, no additional occupant is allowed to occupy the short-term lodging for commercial purposes. Um, and I only put that in there because a person could in theory occupy their own home they own, but I'm just throwing that out there. So, or, so, so for converters, for short-term lodging purposes, it cannot be reoccupied until, uh, May twentieth or sooner if the emerg, uh, those, one of those three, uh, occurrences happen. Um, the only exception being for healthcare and first responders. And the enforcement is, uh, a thousand dollar fine for first violation, suspension of a year on the second violation, and a revocation with the inability to apply for reinstatement for a full year.
I'll second the motion.
Okay, I'm sorry, hang on, just a second.
A small truth to that.
Okay.
I don't think if, even if their contract ends at a certain date, and they would like to shelter the place and stay there longer and rent the place for longer, I am encouraging people moving around as little as possible. So I don't want to dictate if they have to leave at the end of their contract, if they'd like to extend their contract and stay.
Okay, well, then I guess I'll, Mr. Harbaugh, you can, you can put something language to the effect of, um, natural end of the current contract or as amended?
Well, if they're already in place, I could just say they could stay in place. They're already there.
I know, I know, okay. All right, Mr. Hurdman, are you seconding that motion?
Yes, I am.
All right, and now is the time for council discussion on that, and I'll go to Mr. Hurdman first.
I'm fine, I don't need to say anything else. I support the motion.
All right, any other discussion on the motion before we go to a vote? All right, Mr. Avery.
I, I, this is, I think, pretty close, because I, but I'm thinking, you know, they're nine percent down. So I think, suppose you give them one more four day somewhere in that stretch, what are we, a month, it's five weeks, right? And so give them some income, more, more tranch.
Just one.
Just one, just.
Maximum.
If they're nine percent down, probably can't get three or four, but who knows?
One more rent.
Yeah. To allow just, just some more income. I'm assuming that there wouldn't be much more than that anyway.
Can we, can we, how do we regulate that?
I don't know how we regulate that. That's the problem.
I like that idea. Why don't, why don't you make it an amendment?
I mean.
Well, this is, you gotta trust the operators. You cannot police it.
Is that a substitute motion?
Yes.
All right, hang on. Okay, all right, do we have a second?
I have a second.
Okay. We have discussion on that motion. Okay, uh, so.
If you do a, if you allow for that, Brad, you're just rotating potential carriers through our city.
Well, I'm just trying to balance income for folks that are in the business with that, that side of it. I, I understand what you're saying.
But is that common? That's we rotate. If we cause one more death because we rotate another set of people through our city, then we're responsible.
We have twenty-eight thousand people coming to the beaches.
Hang on, hang on, hang on. I'm sorry, hang on. Hang on. So I'm just gonna, so Ms. Brenner, you had your, anything else on that one? It's okay. All right, Miss Dixon.
I support motion.
All right, um, all right, any other discussion?
And I think it's a fair compromise. I guess I will comment. Um, instead of an outright ban, uh, I mean, we haven't even banned our beaches. I mean, that's what's being marketed, and we can't come to that. I'm not bringing that up now. I'm just saying, that's the ultimate fix to this problem. And so we are trying to do incremental measures here, and I'm, I'm trying to recognize the precarious nature of all of our businesses in our community, and when, and if, and if this can help eliminate the things I've said earlier, we've all said, the one, two-night minimum stay and the partyers, uh, and we give them one more rest, I think that's fair. In my opinion, I think that's fair, and I think Mr. Avery made a good alternative motion, substitute motion, so.
Okay. Uh, so, saying no further discussion, I'm going to take a vote on this. Oh, I'm sorry, Mr. Field.
So I didn't under, I'm so, I couldn't follow what difference, what did Brad say? It's really hard to hear, I'm sorry.
That's okay. I'll clarify the, I'll clarify the motion. All right. Between, um, May twentieth, uh, between, between today and May twentieth, a person who holds a short-term lodging permit, who has a current tenant, can allow that tenant to, I, I, it's just not tenant, is it tenant? Sorry, cus, renter, renter, we'll call renter. Who has a current renter, uh, can allow that renter to stay in place.
Physically there.
Or physically there. Then.
In place for the month or something, what, I don't get, in place, what do you mean?
Whatever the, whatever the term is.
Oh, okay, got it, got it, got it, all right.
And then that, that licensee would be allowed to rent one more time between now and May twentieth for a minimum of four nights. That's the difference between what Mr. just said and what Ms. Brenner said, and Ms. Brenner's going, does not include a four-night minimum, because it would be a prohibition on occupancy. That was her original motion, that, that's the difference, a, a complete prohibition on occupancy after the current renter leaves.
Right.
Versus, versus Mr. Avery's motion and seconded by Ms. Dixon would allow for one more four-night stay, minimum stay between now and May twentieth. And so, yeah, so why don't we, I, I've seen our staff concerned about, I'm guessing enforcement.
Enforcement, and I just want to be clear, is it all permittees can do a one-four-night stay? Or just the ones who are, have occupancy now?
The answer, my understanding on the motion, so the, the question, on the, the question from our city manager is, would all short-term lodging permittees be allowed to do one more four-night stay, or only the ones with residence or a, a renter, a current renter? And I believe the answer is all.
I, I think it'd be very difficult to enforce that ordinance, and if you allow for that exception.
Why?
Because how are we gonna know if this is the first time they've rented or the second time? Um, it makes it very difficult.
Don't we get that information on the TOT part of it, what the date of rental is? We can control it that way.
Well, the TOT comes a month later.
Well, then now, well, now we violated the ordinance.
Yeah, I need to do random audits.
If they pay, if they pay the TOT.
Yeah, I mean, they're in business, they're not gonna abscond, and we, we will.
It's just, we do random audit.
Yeah.
When it says just don't report, then we wouldn't, we wouldn't know.
But then that.
It's only one four-night stay, right?
Uh, I just think it'd be very difficult to en- enforce that.
But then we ought, post, we could do an audit afterwards to see how many, by that address had been rented.
But as soon as they're gonna pay the TOT.
Yeah.
But they do.
Well, they should.
But the audits are not our concern, and whether they pay their money, our concern is how many of them bring in more people than they're supposed to. And we're way past the time where they've already done that, by the time we go to audit their money. Our purpose is to limit the exposure of our residents to short-term renters.
Oh, one other point we didn't include, that I think I mentioned about limiting occupancy.
That's true, we didn't, we did not include that in.
Maybe to four people?
Total.
Lot two people per bedroom.
Normal six, right? You get two in the living room.
Yeah, but we're not gonna say that, just two, just for bed.
I hate to say this, but I, I am coming down a little bit on the enforcement issue right now. I don't know how we enforce this either. I, I know, I know that, I mean, that's part of the, that's been, that's been part of the problem for the last couple of weeks, of trying to figure out how to enforce what's our, what we already have in place.
We're playing on the honor of our.
And, and so, and so the, so, and how, I mean, I'm just, I am, I am really.
The honor system.
All right, I'll tell you what, um, we have a motion on the table from Mr. Avery. Um, if you'd like to include, if you'd like to ask for a friendly amendment on the occupancy side, then go ahead.
May I, Mr. Avery, uh, limit occupancy to two persons per bedroom?
Legitimate bedroom, is that? Legitimate bedroom.
Do you agree with that?
Okay, that's part of the motion.
And can we add to the honor system? We are doing this to protect our business and our residents, to protect the safety and health of our residents, and we implore our rental companies to, to do the right thing, or we would eliminate it altogether.
Well, that can't be part of the ordinance.
No, I know.
Okay, all right. Okay, um, Mr. Harb, how would you like to proceed at this point, just given that we've got, we do have a motion. Um, if it fails, we would go back to the original motion. Uh, there isn't an enormous amount of difference between the two in terms of a red line, uh, there's an enormous amount of difference between the effectiveness, but not in terms of what a red line is. Do you, would you like us, would you like to?
If I get a five minutes, I can show a version of each, of each what.
Okay.
What's been proposed.
All right.
We need to take a five-minute break.
Yeah, we're gonna take a five-minute recess, given all of the discussion, making sure that we get this one right. So we'll take a five-minute recess.
Gee, you have a five-minute recess.
Have fun.
Hang on, hang on.
From me. He's been started, you can hear me dead? Okay.
Can you hear us in the other room?
Yes, but my screen is very blurry.
Yeah. Ours is too.
Hang on, we'll fix the technical issue before we start back up. All right, um, so coming back, coming back in, when we left off, the, um, the discussion was about trying to do a red line, and also trying to work through enforcement issues. Before we, before we start down the red line version to try to figure out, um, you know, the language of it, I want to make sure we're, we had exhausted the issue of enforcement. So, um, does anyone have?
Yes, to me.
Okay, sorry, go ahead, Mr. Avery.
Yeah, I, I've been thinking about this. Um, there's, I, I, and just, if we're going to do this, I think we need to at least demonstrate that we have an ability to check and enforce, uh, as we've described the enforcement language. Um, so I guess I'm asking, is there a way that we can track what the activity is, so we can know if we did an audit on some of the operators, see if they rented again? How many times they've rented?
Simone, why don't you just come forward, so we can make sure the mic picks it, picks you up. This is a little bit odd, but yeah, right there is perfect. So right now, who's speaking is Simone Georges, our community development director, in response to Mr. Avery's question, so go ahead.
Castleberry Avery, the, the only way we can do it, we do have an honor house that does spot checks, and basically the property owner provides their books to us. We don't have a mechanism to cross-reference to any platforms, Airbnb or Speedy or HomeAway. They don't share their information, so it's really the honor system of ensuring that those books are accurate and honest, and that, that's the only information we have.
Right, but those, and they, they all have, most of them have used the platforms Airbnb or HomeAway or something, right?
For, for booking, but they don't have to use a platform for receipts or for taking in income.
Okay.
They can get it separate outside the platform.
So we could see the bookings.
We, we don't have access to, Airbnb will not share their booking with us.
Right.
So we don't know if it was booked or is not booked, really.
Right, but the, uh, the city could ask the, the landlord or the rental company to provide those.
Yes.
That could be part of the honor.
Yes.
Right?
Correct.
And do we know at any time which, how many platforms and which platforms any individual operator is using? Because many of them use multiple op.
Right, so we know the major ones.
Right.
And I've heard there's up to maybe fifty different platforms. Um, so, you know, they, they can use a, a number of different ones, and some that come and go also.
Right.
So yes, the, but we all rely on, on the information provided from the property owner to us.
There's no way to be sure.
That's correct.
It's the honor system.
It is the honor system.
May I just ask a follow-up question?
Yeah, go ahead.
Um, Mr. Georges, is, because we are also considering in the future, outside of this pandemic crisis, ways to bring the plat, online platforms more into working with us more cooperatively? And by providing, requiring the permit number and all that, would that facilitate greater compliance on what we're doing now? It's just because the platforms don't have that requirement, because we don't have an ordinance?
I, I, I think, to go along with that, that idea is to, to require the permit number to be posted on the platform, and then for the property owner to share that booking with us. I think that's a paper trail that we can rely upon, if we want to go that.
But it can be done. We haven't gotten there yet, we were going, we're thinking, certainly thinking about that.
That's correct. And I think, I think what's key, it's, it's less the permit number, it's more of showing, sharing that the booking was done on the platform, that they saved those records and provide those records to us.
Okay, it's not necessarily the permit that we need, it's just sharing the record. So it can be done with sharing the record.
That's, that's correct. That's, that's correct. Yeah. The only, my only caveat is that they don't use a platform to have regular clients that book on a regular basis. They may never use a platform. And, and we know of regulars that do, um, come here to book, so that's, so that's the only missing link there.
Sure. That makes sense.
Okay.
Thank you.
All right. Um, all right. So, having said that, uh, I'm sorry. Oh, I apologize. Mr. Herdman?
Yeah, I, um, I think we're losing sight of why we called this special meeting in the first place. There, it really wouldn't, in an emergency, a national emergency, a world pandemic like we have now, there is no room for compromise. There just simply isn't. We're, we're, we're trying to prevent the spread of this disease in our city. We're trying to prevent the city contributing to any deaths. And we just, we need to take action tonight. That's all I need to say. We just, there's no room for compromise here in this emergency.
Yeah. Okay. All right. Uh, Mr. Avery, your motion's on the table.
I withdraw the motion.
Withdraw the motion. Okay. Uh, that puts Ms. Brenner's motion on the table, which I think does not require much modification, Mr. Harb.
Yeah. So, let's go ahead and put a red line up. Uh, I think that, um, maybe we could just kind of walk through it. Is it showing?
Bring this one?
So, on the first page, I went ahead and added the provision that Mosher noted, um, that Mosher noted about the state of emergency being declared by the governor. That, that was a good catch on his part. I'm not sure why that got eliminated. On the second page, there wouldn't be any changes. On the third page, the change would be to section three, and we added the language clarifying that this provision's only in effect until May 20th, 2020, at the latest. And that, uh, we added some language that deals with the issues that was raised, raised by the public about advertising, um, during the time this ordinance is in effect for, for occupancies that are outside of the timeline for the emergency. That's the language there in three. Section four, on page four, we changed it so any person currently occupied a lodging unit for a short-term may continue the occupancy. And then, section five, we revised to note the first, second, and third violations. First violation being a thousand dollar fine. Second violation, suspension for one year. Third violation, relocation and inability to, uh, they would not be eligible to reapply for short-term lodging permit for one year. And then, on page, uh, five, section 11, I added, uh, an end date of May 20th, 2020, as long as that this ordinance could be in effect.
Okay. Can you go, I'm sorry, could you, could you go up? One, a little bit more.
Make it larger?
No, it's okay. Okay. Thank you. Okay. All right. Uh, maker of motion is, uh, Ms. Brenner. Does this, the language satisfy your motion? All right. The second was from Mr. Herdman. Does this satisfy, uh, your second?
Yes, it does.
Okay. I'm going to take a mo, I'm going to take a, um, I'm going to take a vote on that motion, um, at this time. So, because we need to do roll call, I'm going to go, I'm sorry, Mr. Duffield. I apologize. Go ahead.
Um, thanks. Hey, so, so this is the one time between now and May 20th that you can rent again?
No.
That's okay. That, hang on. I'll, I'll, I'll clarify. That's okay. Before we take a vote, I need to, I, marriage required to do clarification anyway. So, um, the motion on the table for Ms. Brenner is if there is a current occupant, that occupant can stay through the end of the rental agreement. Um, and terminate on May 20th? Or one of the other three, um, one of the other three, whichever sooner, correct?
That's right. So, it, it, the, the final date that this could be in effect is May 20th. If one of the other actions happened before, then it would have served.
Correct. And we will be bringing this back for review on May 12th, um, with additional enforcement mechanisms in place. Does that, does that clarify for you, Mr. Duffield?
Um, so, I, that was a simple que, I, I don't know why I was.
No, that's a.
This is a one time, you can rent one more time, and then that's it?
Nope. There will be no new, there will be no new rentals between now and May 20th if this motion passes. Well, it's no new.
Okay. Okay. Thank you.
And, and so that, and that was the, the discussion from Mr. Avery. I, I believe that.
I got, thank you. Thank you. I got, sorry.
Okay. All right. That's okay. So, I'm going to go, um, I'm going to go along the dais, uh, for the, uh, for the motion in place. So, uh, we'll go roll call. Mr. Herdman, how do you vote?
Aye.
Ms. Dixon, how do you vote?
Aye.
Ms. Brenner, how do you vote? Mr. Duffield, how do you vote?
Nay.
Mr. Avery, how do you vote?
Aye.
I think on this one, I've got a, I, we've got to be unified. Um, in an emergency, we've got to be unified, and I'm, I'm going to go, I'm, I'm going to vote aye.
Okay. I'll, I'll change mine to aye too then, for that reason.
All right. Uh, then the, uh, the motion on the table passes unanimously, six to zero. And at this point, um, we'll open it up to our med, our final item, which is, uh, public comment on non-agenda items. Do we have any public comment on non-agenda items?
Mayor O'Neill, members of the council. Mayor O'Neill, and members of the council, my name is Jim Mosher. At your last meeting, I failed to commend you on two things. Number one, providing, as you did today, a place for the public to observe and participate in your meeting live and in real time. Something that I, as far as I know, is still required despite the governor's relaxation of the Brown Act on March 12th. Secondly, for not hiding behind closed doors to discuss the city's response to the coronavirus. As I understand it, several of our neighboring cities have completely barred the public from attendance or participation in their meetings, and they have used closed-door sessions to discuss their city's response to the COVID crisis. I think they are wrong on both counts, and I think you are right. I thank you for that. I would observe, however, that at your next regular meeting on April 14th, there is a contentious issue scheduled for discussion. And if today's experience guides us, social distancing would work a lot better if the city avails itself of all the seats it has available, and not force the entire public audience into the community room as we did today. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Mosher. Any other comments on non-agenda items?
Hi, Catherine Rosson. Yes, uh, in the spirit of no room for compromising, as, as Herman was saying, is, uh, I will ask you to consider to close the public restrooms. Marina Park, 15th Street, the piers. If people are not supposed to come here, and you're supposed to walk around your house or nearby, then you don't need to use the public restrooms. You see, next door, people that live in Newport Highs that are going to Balboa Island to walk around. So, we should all try to promote to really stay in your neighborhood, eh, for that reason. And the other one is, uh, I don't know what point, then, close the beach. Like, they have going Laguna Beach and Seal Beach. So, that's for your consideration. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker, please. All right. Seeing no further, um, we stand adjourned. Thank you.